All right, it's 6:00 PM. I hereby open the Planning Commission work session. Could we get a roll call, please?
Chair Salazar.
Present.
Vice Chair Bergen.
He's muted.
Here, sorry, here.
Commissioner Buck.
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Commissioner Rhodes Die.
Here.
And Commissioner, I'm not seeing.
Commissioner Stout said he would be joining us. He isn't why right now. So and he should have the link. I'll text him.
And Sandy, I think you also missed Commissioner Thompson.
Right, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thompson, thank you. I'm not seeing him either. So.
Nope, I see him signing in right now. All right, well, while he gets logged in, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Nope. All right, and Commissioner Thompson, we just took role. It looks like you're now present.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Then we'll mark you as present. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. This meeting is a work session where the public may attend but not provide comment. And is our next session, as CCI, we're meeting, that is a regular session. So later during our regular session at 7:00 PM, there will be time for business from the audience. But in the meantime, we're going to call our agenda item, which is the Comprehensive Plan Map Clarification Project.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Chelsea Hartman. I think I last came to you all in November, so I think I've maybe had met all of you. So it's been a while, and tonight I'm here to share an update on the Comprehensive Plan Map Clarification Project. I'm getting a Zoom notification that the screen sharing is not an option. So I don't know if that's an easy thing to update, or I had some presentation slides I was going to share.
It's, uh, it's not, I don't believe. We had to have a second screen for that, but I assumed that you knew how you were going to present.
Well, she, we have to enable her to share those screens.
Definitely.
Thank you. I am learning the system that you make co-host, okay. Thank you for explaining that to me.
Yes, thank you for fixing that. Okay, so I'll share my screen. Okay, hopefully everyone is seeing the slide now. Awesome, thanks so much. So I'm here tonight to provide a project update on the Comprehensive Plan Map Clarification Project and really excited to actually share our first property-specific draft maps that we've been working hard on. I did want to start with just kudos to folks that have been working on the project team to get us to this point. So Monica Sather was the project manager before me. Liz Miller, Mike Travis, Mike Engelmann, and Sandy and Christina in the room also have been really helpful to getting the project to this point with doing lots of property research. So tonight, we're seeking feedback on drafts of the maps. We have them available as a PDF and a web map. And we'd also like your feedback on our potential adoption approach for the map. First, I'll start with some brief background since it's been a while. So just backing it way up, a comprehensive plan is a high-level policy and planning tool that reflects the community's vision. And the Comprehensive Plan Map identifies the type and location of future development. The plan designations that are shown on the map here reflect the vision for how land can be used in a general way. For several decades, the Metro Plan and its diagram have served as the sole comprehensive plan for Metropolitan Lane County, Springfield, and Eugene. More recently, both cities have established separate urban growth boundaries. And since then, we've been working to make separate city-specific comprehensive plans and moving away from solely relying on the Metro Plan. Moving from one plan structure to another has been pretty resource-intensive, so we've been developing our Springfield Comprehensive Plan in phases. A key step is to create a property-specific Springfield Comprehensive Plan map that clarifies the boundaries of plan designations that are shown on the Metro Plan diagram on this slide here and also included in attachment two in your packet. The Metro Plan diagram was adopted as an 11-by-17-inch paper map, so it makes it pretty difficult to read and figure out what a designation is for a property. It's a really high-level map for our comprehensive plan right now and really doesn't provide enough geographic detail that meets the needs we need, we have today. This image is the latest unofficial version from 2010, just to give a sense of the broad brush graphic theme. Here's a more close-up example of how the information could look different in a property-specific map. So on the right, you can see more detail about streets and property lines. And on the left is the Metro Plan diagram, which is more blobby and hard to show the detail, but the designations as shown by the colors aren't much different compared between the two maps. So by doing the work to create a property-specific map, people will have a way to see how each property is planned in Springfield with better confidence. One reason why answers about a specific property are not always easy and quick to provide today is that we found that the line or border between different plan designations or the colors on the Metro Plan diagram can cover an entire property or more in an urban context because of the scale of the map. So we've been doing research to interpret the Metro Plan diagram to look into how to best determine the line between plan designations. The Metro Plan text also aligns with this project because it speaks to the need to evolve to a property-specific map and recognizes that Springfield and Eugene will both create their own city-specific comprehensive plans. So just to reinforce the project purpose and what we are and aren't doing, this has been a fact-finding project to interpret existing information. We're really aiming to clarify and not revisit or reimagine existing plan designations. It is an opportunity to provide greater certainty and make information more accessible. Though this project is not exploring major changes, it still has meaningful results that can benefit many in the community. Adapting a property-specific map will bring us one step closer to creating the land use element or chapter of Springfield's Comprehensive Plan, since the map will be the visual component and be accompanied by some policy language to support the map. Comprehensive plans are important for the community since it's sometimes one of the first resources people use when trying to understand if realizing their goals for a property are possible. Currently, it's difficult for many property owners to find out the plan designation. And sometimes extensive staff research may be required to provide an answer. Creating this new map will resolve these situations, save time, and provide confidence in future decisions because people be able to use property research tools that are easy to access and use. The map will also serve as a beginning step towards determining how much of our residential land supply exists and is buildable. This information will feed into a foundational piece of our housing capacity analysis, which must be adopted by December 2025. Lastly, research during this project will identify conflicts between a property zoning and plan designation. Understanding the scale of this development barrier can help the city determine the priority of how to address that issue in the future. So to recap what work has been done so far, the project team started by gathering background resources and coordinating with other jurisdictions who have done similar work. And that led into this next task of establishing community engagement. That work included coming to this commission and your role as the Committee for Citizen Involvement, where you approved a community engagement plan for this project and appointed a project advisory committee, or PAC, that formed as a result of substantial recruitment within the region. The PAC consists of people who live or work in Springfield, as well as several private sector land use planning experts. The project team also solidified a separate technical resource group, or TRG, which is made up of staff from Lane Council of Governments, Lane County, City of Eugene, Springfield School District, Willamette Lane, and the Department of Land Conservation and Development. The next phase of work that we just wrapped up was focused primarily on property research for areas that required interpretation of the Metro Plan diagram. So as I mentioned earlier, we focused our research on areas that appeared to be near more than one color on the diagram. This work also included ensuring our draft map reflects our adopted refinement plans as well as any adopted changes to the Metro Plan diagram since it was last adopted in 2004. This research helped us confirm what's been adopted for properties we had questions about. And we also sent letters to property owners to seek their understanding of plan designations based on what we found during the research. Another mailing was just sent out this week, so any day now it should be hitting mailboxes to all owners of properties that we researched to let them know a draft map is now available for review and feedback. I'll talk more about outreach in a moment. So in addition to the research, we held a series of meetings with the project advisory groups. Their roles have been to provide suggestions to staff on desired outcomes of the map, but they have not voted on a recommendation to Planning Commission or Council. A summary of their discussions is included in attachment four in your packet. So last time we came to you all in November, we shared some potential map mapping options that came out of the project advisory group and technical research group discussions. We went to Planning Commission first and then City Council following that. And general feedback from both groups was in support of staff recommendations on a few key policy topics. And that included to not designate public rights of way. So as you can kind of see on the map here, the roads are just white, no color assigned. Another key topic was to retain the refinement plan details for the interactive web map, which allows us to show the full detail a lot easier. And then, as part of that, we also wanted to create a simplified PDF map by consolidating similar designations where possible. The third topic we discussed was to show all nodal development areas as overlays. Previously, they were shown as a mix of base designations and overlays, and now we're just, for consistency and simplicity of showing them on the map, they all appear as overlays. And then the final topic that I'll mention a little more tonight as well is to allow for some flexibility in the plan designation boundaries with clear parameters in specific situations. So following the guidance from Planning Commission and Council, staff worked to create initial draft maps that we shared with our advisory groups this past winter to discuss ways to refine the drafts before we shared them during outreach. The advisory groups overall provided positive feedback on the PDF map since it was much simpler and had a more consolidated legend and symbology. And overall, the suggestions were to make the web map more similar to the PDF map because they liked the simpler approach. And a key part of that was wanting to simplify things but also maintain the intent of adopted refinement plans, so trying to balance those two things. This feedback informed the revised PDF map that's in attachment five, as well as the revised web map that's also linked on that PDF. So based on the feedback from the advisory groups on the initial draft maps, one thing, we're slightly shifting from the initial guidance from Planning Commission and Council in November, which focused on retaining most of the refinement plan details while not amending the plan's text. Now, we are, we looked at the refinement plans a bit further after the PAC and TRG suggested looking at how we could consolidate designations further. And now we are proposing to consolidate designations such as government and education, public land, and parks and open space under one public land and open space designation. That term is similar to what we call for the similar zoning of these properties. This approach combines five different variations of designations into one, which helps simplify the map a lot. An example is shown in this image here with the various shades of green and blue going to one shade of green. This approach will require minimal text amendments to reflect the change in some designation names. Another topic that we discussed with our advisory groups and with you all in November was how to allow for some flexibility in plan designation boundaries with clear parameters. We're still looking at how to draft language to approach this in a clear and predictable way. And some of the locations and situations we are considering include large sites that have split designations or more than one color on the map as shown here in the image, where specific boundaries could be set during later steps, such as as part of master planning. Another situation being considered are areas near the public land and open space designations. A lot of those designations intend to generally follow natural features in some cases. And this creates ambiguous splits across properties, such as along the mill raise. Lastly, we're considering allowing some flexibility as part of property line adjustments, land divisions, and replats if they're applied for under a Type II procedure, since that process requires public notice to nearby property owners. A main key topic of interest during the advisory group meetings beyond just talking about the maps themselves is a lot of curiosity of how the map will be adopted and maintained over time. Staff have been discussing an adoption approach, which right now we are proposing includes to adopt a land use element as part of our Springfield Comprehensive Plan that will include the map itself and the supporting policy language for the map. For the maps, we are proposing to adopt them as PDFs at a scale sufficient to determine the exact plan designations and boundaries of each tax lot. And then finally, there will be related text amendments to the Metro Plan, our Springfield Comprehensive Plan, refinement plans, and our development code to support the guidance that we received from Planning Commission and Council in November. So during the discussion with our Technical Resource Group, staff from the Department of Land Conservation and Development offered to meet with city staff to provide insight based on their experiences with other jurisdictions about how they've adopted and maintained maps similar to what we're trying to do, and also how to allow for some flexibility in the boundaries. So that's something we're still following up on to start fleshing out some of the language that will be included for adoption. In a moment, we would like to hear your feedback on the potential adoption approach. And following this, staff will vet the approach and discuss potential trade-offs with staff from Lane County and Eugene as well. So for next steps, right now, we're sharing the draft maps using outreach strategies from the Community Engagement Plan. So far, this includes mailings to selected property owners, an online story map that provides a visual project overview, an online questionnaire that's live right now, and an in-person open house that we'll be having on May 4th. A summary of all of the feedback we'll get during outreach will be shared with our project advisory groups. And that will also help us inform any map refinements before we come back for adoption. In order to prepare for adoption, as I mentioned, we're also drafting the text amendments and any other supporting materials. And we'll come back to Planning Commission for a work session prior to a joint public hearing with Lane County later this year. So right now, we have the PDF and web maps both on our website at Springfield-or.gov-comp-map. We also have an online story map that kind of visually walks through the process we've gone through to create the map and includes the questionnaire. So that was kind of our virtual opportunity to share the information, provide a simple project overview, and a way to submit feedback online. And then we are also hosting an in-person open house from 5:30 to 7:30 on Thursday, May 4th, at Thurston High School Library, where we'll have the draft maps and some laptops so we can look up specific properties if folks have questions and accept feedback at that open house as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the project you may have, and we'd really appreciate any feedback you have on the draft web map or the draft PDF map, as well as any feedback you may have on our potential adoption approach. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Chelsea. Do we have any questions from the Commission? Commissioner Schmunk?
So, um, this is a presentation on the plan clarification. Is that also includes the other issue with regard to the development of the comprehensive plan? Is this one discussion, or is this, is this just about maps?
Primarily about the map itself. We will be adopting a land use element, so that'll be a chapter of our Springfield Comprehensive Plan, but we're not proposing any other additions necessarily to like fully transition to a Springfield Comprehensive Plan. I don't know if Sandy, if you'd add anything to that.
So the web map, when it's, I guess, when it's complete or even now, can you print a PDF from that?
That's a good question. I don't know if it has that functionality at the moment, but that was kind of our intent with the PDF map. The web map is really great for if you're looking for a specific property and want to zoom in. And the PDF map is built at a certain scale that the detail that you can get from the web map is retained when you do print it. So it is a more printer-friendly version, and that's why we have the PDF.
I understand that, but I guess what I'm saying is, so would it be a dual maintenance of effort for these maps? Maintenance?
I think yes. So ideally, we, the data layer behind what's creating both the web map and the PDF is just one piece of information that will be maintained so that both will be updated regularly and should be consistent.
Okay, real quick, Chelsea, there's assumption to print off of the interactive web map currently. You're looking at, so I would imagine that that would be retained.
Okay.
To print from the interactive map, you're saying?
To print a, to print a PDF, either print to PDF or to print, print to PDF to save it, or to print to PDF to actually print it. And you can select a number of different, you know.
Filters, yeah.
Yeah, just page sizes. And whatever view you're currently looking at. That's the way that our GS, GIS map spring function works now. And so I imagine we've retained that.
So someone could turn on whatever filters, print their PDF, and that's somehow different than the other PDF that they were talking about?
Well, that would be one static. The difference is just one sort of pre-approved static image that is available to people who don't want to go into the interactive mapping to get it, to get their own PDF.
Okay, well, I'll just say, it seems to me a little odd that you would maintain both when the functionality is much better online. And if somebody, if it's, if you're doing this PDF purely so someone without a connection can, you know, look at it, it seems to me that, well, okay. Sorry, just a couple more. So trying to understand at what base level you have the data. That is to say, if you're, if I'm standing on any piece of ground in Springfield, is there a number that goes with that? Or how are you, what's the base, the smallest, you understand what I'm saying, the smallest increment?
Yeah, so we are using the tax slot layer as our basis to tie the plan designations to. So each property that has the tax lot boundaries, as you see in the map, that's how we're tying the plan designation boundaries to that. So ideally, we want to develop some language that will be in the comp plan about how our map also maintain, is maintained over time as those tax lot lines become more precise or shift with updated survey data or whatever through the county.
And presently, the map doesn't link to the county database. Is that correct?
Right now, we didn't link to Arlid or things like that, but we do link to map spring. So you are able to, or anyone's able to access the public version of Arlid, the regional land information database that way.
Look, Commissioner Schmunk, are you asking about the current Metro Plan diagram? Or are you talking about?
I'm talking about map, the flexibility of the map. I'm trying to understand it.
Because currently, we, I mean, what, what we use for our plan designations is the Metro Plan diagram.
Which is the PDF.
It's a paper map that we've made into a PDF, correct. So, um, but I think one of the reasons that we want to adopt the paper map is because then it's a, we're not having to adopt something, an electronic record, which is much harder to go and look up or for people to understand. And so it's like, for permanent record retention, we have this, okay, it's been adopted, we can see what it is. And then we maintain that. As we maintain the digital database that's tied geographically to the tax slots, as Chelsea was talking about. But then if there's a change in the plan designation that would get changed in the database, we would change it on the PDF. That PDF would be posted. If people want to have that map in a format that has the legend and all the things that you normally have, then that would be available.
Okay. Okay, well then, last question. So why aren't the rights of way designated? Is that too difficult given the structure of the database? Are they part of a property or?
So most of them are usually assigned a tax lot shape but aren't treated the same as property for other purposes. So really, I think the main purpose with that was for map readability, to have the streets show through so people can be able to orient themselves. And we do want to have some language in the comp plan about what happens when right-of-way is vacated. And then it needs to be assigned a plan designation. But since it's right-of-way and not going to be developed as residential or anything like that, it just didn't quite make sense to assign it a plan designation. Currently, our zoning does zone rights-of-way in some instances, but it's not consistent. And ideally, as part of this project, we'll make that approach consistent with our plan designations, so no longer wanting to zone or designate rights-of-way and having some accompanying language about what to do or how to assign different zoning and designations when right-of-way is vacated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Buck, I saw your hand raised earlier. Do you still have a question?
Thank you, Chair. Just, just one. Commissioner Schmunk was pretty thorough, so that was, that was helpful. I was just, I was just curious. I know that you'd mentioned that there's going to be some specific information put out there about how to update the map with regards to tax slot shifts. But I wonder if it's also going to include information about changes to the urban growth boundary. I think that it's reasonable to assume in the, in the next few years that that, that discussion could could take off. I mean, I could, I could see the potential for that, that growth boundary shifting. And I'm just wondering if there's going to be some information included in this as to how the map can shift along with that and what that process would look like.
That's a good question. I think I'll start with the urban growth boundary piece. So as part of this project, we're hoping having a property-specific map that shows our plan designations will provide really good information that feeds into our housing capacity analysis, which will look at, do we have enough land supply within our current urban growth boundary to meet the future growth that we're expecting? So that is kind of related in that way, but we don't or haven't been thinking about specific language about how, like, if and when an urban growth boundary were to move, how do the plan designations move with that? But I how do the plan designations move with that? But I think as part of the last urban growth boundary process, it's just kind of, I think the approach has been to assign property-specific plan designations to any tax slots that are brought in or any property that is brought into the urban growth boundary. So I assume we would do something similar.
I, uh, thank you very much. I think that will cover it for me for right now.
Thank you. And Chelsea would, I mean, going back to the PDF versus the, the digital version of the map, would, I'm assuming that both would be available somewhere on the city website that you'd be able to choose whether to click on the, the PDF versus the, the more detailed and interactive digital map. Is that true?
Yes, currently both versions are on our project webpage and our intent is to keep it that way. So they will potentially become part of map spring or something else in the future. Once it is adopted, that comp plan designation layer will live on in a web map of some kind. And we still want to maintain a PDF map for folks that do have a preference for a printed map. And ideally, we'd have that printed at City Hall as well.
That's great. I, I think that's a great approach to, yeah, giving people flexibility in the, the level of detail that they need to access and they want to access. Even in different, different settings of when they want to access the map. So that's great. Yeah, I really also just wanted to say that I appreciate the feedback from the Project Advisory Committee. I think that's a great that move to consolidate the public lands designation really does clarify the map and makes it a lot more simple to see and simple to read. So I think that's a great move forward. And in terms, I know you were seeking feedback on the adoption procedures, and I think there's a good, a good plan moving forward for that. So yeah, really appreciate the work that you and staff have put to, put into making sure that this process is well thought out and making sure that we have good feedback from the community as well. I did want to ask about what was the reason for selecting just one open house and why Thurston specifically versus somewhere else in the city? Was there, what was the reasoning?
It really came down to a lot of timing and space availability limitations. Now that we're kind of post pandemic, City Hall has a lot more programs going on, so it's been kind of tough to find a time to have a scheduled open house. Our intention is to still have printed materials available at City Hall through the duration of the comment period. So I, we are going to have the comment forum online and printed out available at City Hall and at the open house that we'll have on May fourth. Available through May eleventh so that we can have that public comment period. And then Thurston, we were ideally hoping to have something on this side of town and then something on the other side of town. So that, that is ultimately why we ended up choosing the high school.
That makes sense totally. Thank you. Commissioner Stout?
Thank you. Um, this is, I love GIS work. I love math work. Super geeky about it. I think you're doing great work on it. How do you expect the day-to-day interactions between property owners or potential property owners to change as a result of adopting this map versus the current one that we have? So what, what do you expect to those interactions? How do you expect them to be different?
Yeah, I think it'll just be a huge time saver and folks would actually be able to find the answer themselves right now. The metro plan diagram is really hard to read if you're trying to look for a specific property. So often folks have to call us with questions and it takes a lot of staff time and research to really dig in and try and find out if there's any land use records or any applications in the past that have clarified what that plan designation is, which is the bulk of the work we've been doing for the past year, which was very resource intensive. So ideally now folks will be able to go in and see exactly what their property is themselves and they can still call us. And we'd be able to find that answer a lot more quickly too.
That's phenomenal. Can I ask one more follow-up question? What? I, I see obviously this is big property owners. How do we expect pedestrian users to, to look at this map and be like, oh, look, there's a pedestrian area here. One of my concerns with combining like the parks and the schools, the other thing is it doesn't necessarily mean, hey, there's a pedestrian thoroughfare there. Well, how do we expect pedestrians to look at the map and look at it any differently? Has, is that something you've considered is the pedestrian use case? Because obviously when we have the rights away for the main thoroughfares, okay, that's roads, it's cars. Those are in white, but what about pedestrians?
Yeah, that's a good question. So this won't really reflect that level of detail. My guess is the best resource for seeing that would be our transportation system plan, which really does map out where we want to have those future transportation connections throughout the city.
Thank you. Yeah, I know there was a, a request specifically for feedback on the adoption plan as well. So just wanted to see if anybody had any specific questions or feedback on the adoption plan as presented. All right, seeing none, any additional questions for Chelsea? Oh, yeah, Commissioner Rhodes.
So Chelsea, as you talk about this being a resource for property owners and a time saver for staff, it seems like people are gonna rely on it, which would be great once it gets fully adopted and it's very detailed and people are relying on it. My question is about is there a plan yet for how quickly a change to a specific property will be recorded in the map? And do you think that there could be some kind of note that's put on a property that says we're working on something here?
That's a great question, something we're still talking about internally. So the, one of the questions we're still working on is how often do we want to update the maps or reflect any adopted changes that are occurring to make sure it's as accurate as possible? So any thoughts on that? I think we were thinking quarterly, just to capture things at a regular interval and then having some kind of map disclaimer that clearly states that this information is correct as of whatever date it was last updated. But that's kind of the thinking that we're working on right now.
I'll add that any changes to the plan designation would need to be would come through the planning commission and you would provide a recommendation and then it would be council that actually adopts the change to the plan designation. So there wouldn't ever be a point where we're not sure what it is. It's either this until it's adopted to be something different by the council and then it would be that unless there was some type of an appeal, which wouldn't. That's the only situation I can think of in which, well, you know, who's going to prevail in the final decision? And there are other types of changes that Chelsea's mentioned in terms of more of a GIS data management that can kind of shift some things around or what your reference points are. But those aren't actually going to change the plan designation and just might shift some of the lines. Sure.
I like quarterly. I just would hate to see somebody in there, you know, poking around, trying to figure something out and the information is like seventeen months old.
Yeah, it's possible we can do it, you know, at each time. It's just you know, once it's updated, then the process that Sarah would provide that to the ordinance, adopting ordinance to GIS and they'd be able to maintain it or update it fairly quickly. Again, we haven't finalized exactly if we would do it each time or on a more quarterly system.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Sandy, so I'm trying to understand the, so the PDF is, is set in stone, has gone through commission, is, is set in stone, but the, but the map, you're wanting to keep it also set in stone. Is that, I mean, you're saying that's pretty much what you have to do?
Well, until the council makes an amendment.
And then it could be changed. And then would the PDF be updated at the same time? So so any change that we're talking about minor, whatever the staff finds, oh gee, we have a mistake here. That has to come through the commission?
Well, I'll let Chelsea answer that because we talked about mistakes too.
Yes, that is a great question. Another thing we've been talking about internally of how do we clearly differentiate between a mapping mistake, something that we hope could be done or corrected administratively versus an actual amendment to the plan designations like Sandy was talking about. So we've been having conversations with the Department of Land Conservation and Development of how to exactly determine what that difference is so that hopefully we really want to make it clear so that we can keep the map updated and as accurate as possible. When there are things that are, like Sandy was kind of mentioning, just tax lot line shift because our data is becoming more precise, but it's not changing plan designations. Wanting to keep things updated administratively when it makes sense and then wanting to also reflect the map to for any updates to actual plan designation changes that go through the land use process. So lots of good questions that we're all still, we're still talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Or comments? All right, seeing none. We'll hereby thank you, Chelsea, so much for that presentation, for that information. Hopefully that was helpful for you in moving this forward. Looking forward to seeing this move forward and get adopted and be helpful for, for citizens and so, and develop, development community. So thank you so much. And with that, that's our one item of the work session. So we hereby close the work session. Before we move into the regular session, which is our, our meeting as committee for citizen involvement, just wanted to see, this is our one chance for a break. If we wanted to take a break, take, I'll take a show of hands if anybody wants a break, but otherwise we'll move straight into the work, the regular session. All right, and seeing none, I hereby open the meeting of the Planning Commission acting as the Committee for Citizen Involvement. Can we get a roll call, Sandy?
Chair Salazar?
Present.
Vice Chair Bergen?
Here.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson?
He said present is muted.
Okay, um, Commissioner Schmunk?
Here.
Commissioner Rhodes die here and Commissioner Stout?
Present.
Excellent. And before we get to any adjustments on the agenda, just wanted to recognize that we have two new commissioners here that were able to join us for our last meeting, but that was kind of a strange situation in that we were meeting along with Blaine County and the city of Eugene. So just wanted to give an opportunity for introductions. I know Commissioner Rhodes, you were able to join us as an observer for one of our previous meetings, but also wanted to, to welcome you to and also welcome you, Commissioner Stout, for your first meeting with us as just us. So just wanted to give an opportunity for introductions. My name is Matt Salazar. I have been on the commission for, this is my third year on the commission. And I've lived in Eugene or I've lived in Springfield for four years and the Eugene Springfield area for five. And I work as a project developer at Homes for Good Housing Authority. So with that, would like to pass it on to Commissioner Bergen to, or Vice Chair Bergen to introduce yourself. And then you can pass it on to whoever you want next and we'll go down the line.
Awesome. Well, hello, everyone. I am at home with the kids by myself today, so that's why I am off camera. But I am Commissioner Bergen. I am the last pre-COVID planning commissioner standing. So that's my claim to fame. I've been on since eighteen, I think, or maybe twenty nineteen. And I have been a Springfield resident my whole life. Am a real estate broker in the area and I sit on a couple of different other associations, volunteer work. So I'm very familiar with the work that we do and work with some builders in the area as well. And I'm very excited to have a full commission and would like to extend a warm welcome to not only the two newest planning commissioners, but the additional two we've had in the last handful of months. So, so excited for these fresh faces and fresh ideas and perspectives.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bergen. Commissioner Buck, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I'm Commissioner Buck and I'm also home today due to kind of managing some kid schedules. I'd planned to be there in person, but it didn't work out for me today. I've been on the commission approximately two years. I think wrapping up close to the end of my second year, although I'm not sure exactly when the clock started, but roughly about two years, I think. I, I've lived in the, the area most of my life except for a few years when I was away at college, lived in Oregon all my life, grew up in Eugene, moved to Springfield, been here about fifteen, seventeen years, I think it is, seventeen. Very involved in, in a lot of the things that we do in the community and I'll do some, some work with Lamalane and Springfield Rotary. I work as, as an insurance broker, worked mostly with commercial space, but some, some of the personal stuff as well. And I'm familiar with a lot of the work the commission does in terms of, you know, from that perspective as it impacts, you know, some of the work that I do. I'm really excited to be kind of opening this chapter. I think we've got a lot of great perspective on the, the commission. I'm looking forward to what other people bring. And I think we have some exciting projects ahead of us. I think this next year is going to be going to bring a lot of, a lot of good stuff to Springfield and I'm looking forward to being part of that with all of you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck. Commissioner Thompson?
All right, can you hear me now? Yes, okay, great, awesome. Got a new microphone, new cameras to test it out. Thank you. My name is Sir Thompson. I've been with the planning commission for, I had to check, make sure that they had the days for about six months. So yeah, happy to be here and welcome to the new commissioners. Previous to this, I was on the community development advisory committee and a spot opened up in the planning commission. So I decided to apply. So yeah, happy to be here and primarily spent the last couple of months just observing and learning the processes. And city staff have just been excellent over and over again with how they present material. And so I just really appreciate all the hard work you are all putting in. Little bit about myself, grew up in Thurston for about fifteen years, first half of my life, moved around the states, but came back. Meanwhile, I've lived here in Ward One, so up by Gateway Area. And so we've been here for a little less than two years, but, but love it. And so we're really happy to be back. I'm a project coordinator for the state of Oregon with Business Oregon. And where I work primarily on broadband, but I've also been a land use planner for a couple of different places. But so, yeah, really, really enjoyed being a part of the great group here and appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Schmunk?
Steve Schmunk, been in Springfield all my life. Been in business most of that. I've got, my wife and I have three children and now four grandchildren. I'm just trying to help give back to the community. A lot of great volunteers, a lot of great people in the, in the community. So I was trying to help out.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Rhodes die?
Chair, I am from the Eugene Springfield area, been here almost all my life. And in Springfield specifically, the last couple of years. I'm a Realtor and a property manager here locally. And I'm just super excited to be on this commission and learn and hopefully do some good.
Well, welcome to you. And finally, we'll round out with Commissioner Stout.
Thank you. I'm Alan Stout. I am currently on vacation in Hawaii. I am drinking a beverage out of a coconut. I'm enjoying that very much. The, I'm born and raised in Eugene, left town for a little while, worked in commercial real estate, other things. I'm born and raised in Eugene, uh left town for a little while, uh worked in commercial real estate, other things, my wife and I. We lived abroad for several years and then we moved back to Springfield because of the family after we had started having some children. Uh, currently, I'm in the buy, I buy and sell building materials in the wholesale world and I love it uh to pieces. Um, relevant for the planning, though, is a deep interest in planning and I I'm a. A card carrying member of the Strong Towns Organization and I highly recommend that organization to anyone I talk to about all things planning. So um feel free to let people know for better or for worse that that is my proclivity in terms of uh what I'm interested in. I'm happy to talk about any to any of you, but what that means at any time. So, thank you.
Thank you and welcome to you as well. All right, excellent. Um, Sandy, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, no, I did confirm that Sophie is going to be able to join us here shortly, so we'll keep the agenda as written.
Excellent. Great. And next we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, Sarah, are we gonna have a the the flag on the screen? Are we just gonna use the? The analog version. Excellent. Um, I'll I'll go ahead and uh lead the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, excellent. And next we'll move to the uh approval of the minutes from March twenty first, twenty twenty-three. Are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? All right, seeing no corrections, the minutes are hereby approved. Next, we will take a business from the audience. This is a time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the Planning Commission, acting as the Committee for Citizen Involvement. Uh, Sarah, it doesn't look like there's anyone joining in besides you all. Um. All right, great. And um like asked to, I'd like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. All right, and it doesn't look like we have anybody uh raising their hand or calling in, so we'll go ahead and move on to our next. Item, which is the draft community involvement strategy for parking under the C F E C rules. All right, Sophie, take it away.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, I'm Sophie Megan Lee and I'm working on the climate friendly and equitable communities parking component. Um, in your Springfield, Oregon speaks packet tonight, there is um. There is a draft community involvement strategy. This looks a little different than the community engagement plans you've seen in the past. And that's because, as you all know, these uh state mandated rules are so prescriptive that there's not really much room for substantive, meaningful um. Engagement from the public. Um, really here, what we're going to see is suggestions for changes to the wording of the um code amendments, but not necessarily. The um, the substance of the amendments, because all we're doing is making providing parking optional. Um, for developers and following other components of the climate friendly and equitable rules. Um, since the plan was um presented to you, we've had the communications team um look over the strategy and so. Um, in just a second, I will share my screen and show you some of the changes in track changes. It's mostly just cleanup and reordering. Um, something else that I wanted to note is since I last came before you, um, the city of Springfield was granted an extension by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. The previous deadline for implementing these uh climate friendly and equitable communities rules was this uh June thirtieth. However, we now have an extension through the end of the calendar year, so that's great. Before I launch into the changes, does anybody have any questions for me on just the project and the timeline and why we're calling this a strategy and not a plan? Okay, great. We will just dive into it. Let me share my screen. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Just orient this. Okay, so nothing has changed here. Um, and let me know if I need to make it any larger. This is just the introduction. Here, I just moved um. The first bullet point down to the bottom, um just to change the prioritizing. Something that I would really like um your opinions on is the key messages. Uh, this is a little tough because the. Uh, most prominent key message is that we would like to comply with state law. Um, and because this is not a Springfield initiated project. Um, there's not too much to look for um besides what the state has said, so. Would love to just hear comments there when I get back to it and we can make edits in real time. Um, or you all can direct us to make edits and we can come, um, we can make them behind the scenes. Nothing has changed here. Under the community involvement process, there will be an internal staff advisory group similar to um the group that worked on the transportation system plan. We changed strategies to uh tactics. In this table, we added the um, the column to the far right. Um, just to say who on the Springfield team would be doing each task. Most of them are coming from um me, the planner. Uh, but some like the social media updates and the media release will come from the communications team since they run those channels. Um, and are adept at publishing on them. Um, there was some clarifying language saying that the project page on Springfield Oregon speaks would be linked from the development code updates webpage. And so that webpage has been um amended a little bit ever since the development code update project to just reflect. Any amendments in the future to the development code as a whole. And so Haley will talk to you next about the MS four permits. And those will also live on that page and be able to point to individual Springfield Oregon speaks what uh pages. I also added um a row for comment forms and so since we are trying something a little bit new by expanding on the existing infrastructure on Springfield Oregon speaks. Um, we'll be able to have folks ask questions and make any um any comments they would like on that page and that will be monitored um by the planning team. And then at the very end, just to explain um what what this entire process entails and what has changed. There will be a code amendments handout for the public. Um, it'll also help the planners um at uh, you know, at City Hall be able to. You know, share the changes with the public um and communicate them. And this is very similar to handouts that were. Made at the end of phase one, when we eliminated parking minimums near transit and for certain uses. Then nothing has changed here, except the timeline was just reordered. And so this in your draft was up higher. Now it's here at the bottom. And those are all of the changes, so I can go back up to key messages. Um, and if you have any comments about the rest of the strategy, please let me know and I'm happy to make comments um as we discuss it.
All right, Commissioner Stout?
Um, just, first of all, I I think this is, this is a very solid thing to be doing. I am almost wondering, uh. Elimination of parking minimums or or lowering of parking minimums is something I am very much in favor of. But I'm wondering if the language that we're using may benefit if we include more about. The economic benefits of elimination of of um. Parking minimums rather than simply couching it in terms of equity and environment. And I say that. As a conservative, knowing what, how it the uh communications would feel to me as a conservative.
Great, yes. Thank you for that suggestion. Um, the climate friendly and equitable communities language is what the rulemaking process is just titled from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Um, but it's definitely helpful to have that key message and I can confer with the project team to talk about how we can include it. I know that. The Department of Land Conservation and Development does have some talking points as to the economic benefits of reducing and eliminating parking minimums. So. Yeah, I can chat with Sandy about that and get back to you. Oh, I see Christina raised her.
Yeah, I think also just some context for the commission about why we wouldn't be doing this project, but for the um. State mandated rules during the period from about twenty sixteen until twenty twenty, the city did a really comprehensive. Trans uh code uh amendment process that resulted in a lot of changes to our parking to make it a lot more, there are still parking minimums, but they're uh highly flexible now. Where they weren't before. Um, and there was a lot of public engagement around that process. It went through the Planning Commission, through the City Council. Um, and was a pretty comprehensive look at all of our sort of transportation and infrastructure requirements around transportation, including parking. So um, the city has, you know, as of today, a pretty um flexible parking code. Um, and so we weren't hearing much from the community that we needed to be more flexible towards eliminating parking minimums. Um, and so, you know, sort of. I think we also want to be cognizant of how we went through a process with the community to figure out where the right point was for Springfield. We do not have nineteen eighties parking standards in our code currently. Um, and so just to reflect a little bit around um, we particularly don't want, I think, to discount the work that was done um from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty.
I guess the, you know, following up on both of those comments, um. The. I mean, I guess we've been taking the approach of. Maybe not talking broadly about these amendments, um but sticking to um. A more narrowed view, but I think that. I'm, you know, looking to the Planning Commission for direction in terms of um. How much we want to get into some of the equity or environmental or economic aspects around parking. Um, and if we do, how we couch that, if we talk about it um as the benefits or. In terms of what's motivating the state to do this. So that's um, I think it's a tricky. Kind of balance beam to be walking in terms of how we message this because we. I mean, we want to comply. We wouldn't be doing this but for the state, um at least in this way. And so how do we best successfully communicate with the community about this um project?
Commissioner Rhodes Die, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, uh, just as far as how much we elaborate on this and don't stick to the state prescribed language and. And messaging, um. Are we still in the middle of a lawsuit about this?
Yes.
So maybe we don't want to elaborate too much until after the results of that, both for the sake of everyone's time and also to not. Money the waters of that.
That. That was a little bit my point earlier. Sorry, I didn't mean to. There's a little bit of a lag. I think I interrupted you and I apologize. Um, but that was a little bit of my intent. Um, was that we, you know, part of our argument in our lawsuit is that we went through a lot of work to comply with, you know, direction to reduce parking mandates and so. Um, that's a little bit of what I want to be careful about.
All right, Commissioner Buck?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um. I I certainly agree with the Christine, your point and um the other commissioner's point about wanting to. To respect the timing, um especially with respect to the lawsuit. Um, that that being said, I I do think that it is helpful for us to communicate um a couple of things. When I kind of think about this from the standpoint of the average citizen. Um, there's, there's kind of a gap in understanding. Uh, it's, it would seem. There are state mandates, there there are regulations that we have to conform to and. And there there are mandates out there that um we're responding to. And I don't, I don't know that that is understood. And so I I do think. That taking an approach when the timing makes sense to say, hey, that there are some guidelines by the state, there are some directions. We do have to respond to these things. It's not, it it's not coming out of the blue. Um, that that's, that's a piece of it. We have some choices to how we do this. These are the benefits and 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 helping helping people to see that there's a process with that. Because I don't think that um people fully understand that. This, this isn't just Springfield doing this. This is, this is part of a larger, larger piece within the state. Um, so I I feel like those points are important. Um, but again, I do agree uh fully that. We need to do it when the time is right. So, but uh, just in. When I listen to conversations, um people that aren't involved in planning and and at this level. There's just a lack of of understanding of of just what is coming out uh from Salem um and and what communities are having to respond to. So just wanted to put that out there that I think that there's some value in trying to offer that perspective.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Um, yeah, so um, I guess I wanted to comment that um. I I think the narrow perspective is 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 really the way to go here. I I think um broadening it um in light of the lawsuit. And 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 further, I I I'm, it's difficult for me to figure out. Well, first of all, let me, let me say that um this climate. Friendly and equitable communities. I mean, you read it, it's really a political screed of mission misinformation from my point of view. Um, I know there's what they're trying to do, but um the justification for it is. Is is untethered from what I think most Oregonians would would appreciate. So um, but uh, you know, I think I I think we should focus in the short run. And not to get into these other issues, which may be moot once the lawsuit's complete. Um, so um. Yeah, thank you.
So I think that these messages, as Sophie has presented them, are pretty focused. Um. I do think they get to the mandated requirements of this, but if there is. I mean, if Commissioner Buck or others, if you think that there are some wording changes or some more emphasis that we need to make. You know, these will be the talking points. This is what's going to be on the webs, um, the project page and such, so. And you, you're the ones that know the community best, so that's why we're coming to you for your input.
Yeah, I think on personally, I think it's difficult just because once the um. The the rules are published, um most. I think the wording of of this document is great. I think um I especially like the um. I really like the key messages, the 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 way that they're um framed, um especially in light of the C F E C rules or in in that context. I think they contextualize um the rules well. Um, but. Realistically, I think most people won't learn about these rules from this language. They'll learn from word of mouth or from a news story. So really being. Um, I think as we move forward in this rollout, um. Being clear about whatever language there is in um press releases that go out to the press, I really enjoy or I really appreciate the um. The the table and especially the um section of the table that was added with who's responsible for um for which section. Um, and I think that hopefully Springfield Oregon speaks will present more options for citizens to get in touch. And for the city to directly respond to um. And for the city to directly respond to citizen comment.
Thank you, Chair Salazar. And in the table is also included an FAQ and a fact sheet that will be developed. And so we will definitely plan to share those with the commission so that you can spread the word in your role as CCI members and planning commissioners. So that people know what's going on and. This strategy is really aimed at informing the public as much as we can that this is something the state. Is requiring that the city of Springfield and other cities in Oregon comply with. And this is how we're complying. And really, it's, it's pretty cut and dry there. So. As Sandy said, I echo that if you have any wording changes, please let me know.
And Sophie. Thank you, Chair. So Sophie, I don't know that I would say that I have any, any wording changes necessarily. I guess to clarify my point. I was mostly, I was mostly trying to communicate that I think those messages are, are important and I think that it is. The language is in the draft. I mean, it stands out to me. I just, I just, you know, when we're talking about how we communicate that and Sandy had commented about, you know, what direction do we take? I was just wanting to kind of respond to that, that I think that it is important that people understand. This, these are in response to mandates, not just. Rules that Springfield thinks are a good idea. And so. It's not so much that I think there needs to be language change. I just wanted to say that. I think that message is important. I think that this is a great job and I love to, I love hearing that there's going to be some FAQs along with that in the table. I think those are really helpful. I think this is, this is a well put together draft. And I think it's very informative. Mostly, I just wanted to emphasize that I feel that aspect of the messaging is important. So sorry if I wasn't clear about that in my previous comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck.
Commissioner Salazar.
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Thompson.
I'm sorry, I use Teams all the time, so I can't find the, the raise the hand button on this. Anyways. Sophie, great, great, great key messaging. I wasn't gonna say anything. The only thing that came to my mind is from the perspective of, I guess, a citizen that maybe isn't. Understanding the intention of the CFEC rules is the nexus between. And maybe this would infer too much, but the nexus between fewer places for, I guess we're assuming that. A citizen will infer that fewer places for cars to park will thereby result in less emission of greenhouse gases. In city spaces. So that's the one thing, I think that'd be, that would be a question I had if I was somebody looking this blindly is, okay, so. If the city adheres to these standards, and maybe that's specified further up here, so sorry if I missed that, but if the city adheres to these standards. The goal will be less greenhouse emissions. And so as far as the key message, there you go, there you go, yeah. But if in the key messaging, that's something that would pop up to me if I was to read this for the first time, but thank you for pointing me to the introduction.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
I'll respond to that a little bit. I think. Certainly making it difficult to find places to park, which then hopefully encourages people to take alternative modes. Can help reduce greenhouse gas, but. Just eliminating parking in itself may not necessarily accomplish that if people are driving around and around trying to find the parking spot. Or waiting for somebody to leave. I think that can be countered to. The, the goal, at least in the short term. So. I'm a little, I understand where you're coming from and I think we can talk about that in terms of. You know, these rules are intended as a response to that. But how effective each of the components of the rules are to actually reducing greenhouse gas, I think. Might be harder to make that exact connection without more specific study about. That because I think there are contexts where it can work that way and others where it may not.
I want to add on a little bit to that specifically. From my involvement in the rulemaking process, there was a very explicit assumption that. The more demand there is for transit systems and good transit availability. That that transit demand would automatically be met. So if you just take away places for people to park and increase density so that more people want to use transit. The transit will automatically come to them. And that is just not a realistic, that's not how our local transit providers work in Oregon. And that's not an experience that we have had in Springfield or Eugene or in other jurisdictions throughout Oregon. And it's a fundamental flaw from the litigation perspective. It's a fundamental flaw in the rulemaking process that there was this assumption that. If you take away parking spots, make it, make it harder for people to drive single occupant vehicles and densify. A lot more than we are in certain areas that the transit will automatically respond. And we don't have enough information to know whether that's the case or not. And recent experiences indicated it may not be the case. And no part of the rules is binding on Lane Transit District or other transit providers is the other key aspect of that. They're not bound to do anything in response to these rules.
Commissioner Buck.
Thank you. In just to go to enter, in just a brief response to. What Christina just said, you know, I think the thing that struck me in that, in that statement. Really was the piece about what's realistically the outcomes of this, not only the. The response from public transit. But people in general adopt a change gradually. It's, it's not, it's not immediate. Right now, many people, you know, do use single occupant vehicles. Shifting that and helping people shift to that. It's going to be a process. It won't happen overnight. And so I think that. I think that that's something to take into consideration too. Not that I'm opposed to any of this. I just think that the change. Isn't a quick process, especially for a lot of people that have spent most of their life oriented in one way. If, if your mindset is I'll hop in the car and run down and I'll just do what I need to do and I'll come home. And that's how you view things. It's gonna, it's gonna take time to shift. And I think that's a piece of this too. I mean, obviously, we need to make some shifts. As a community, but just in respect to that, that's, that's going to be. It's gonna take some time. And I think that there's, that needs to be kind of factored in here too. What's the system going to do is Christina's point, but also. What's realistic for people? I think if you just take away parking options and reduce parking options. Ultimately, I don't know that they'll choose, always choose the solution that we think they will. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I know we're getting a little bit into the, our opinions on, on the rules themselves. I do want to keep the, the conversation germane to our communication around the rollout of the rules. If we are in a position in the future that we need to roll these out. Commissioner Schmunk.
Yeah, so I, it's my understanding, I mean, we're, we're, we're doing this kicking and screaming that state's making us do this. So we really don't have an option. So, and I, I, I don't, I don't know how we implement an equity option. And that appears to be what we're, what we're, the state wants us to do is make that equity, people with vehicles can't have them anymore. Because some people don't have them. That appears to be what equity is in this situation. But I think the straight state, from what I can tell, is struggling to figure out what equity is in various contexts. And so again, I'd like to focus on just what we have to do, appears to be what we're doing here. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think in terms of the, the rules themselves and the climate friendly and equitable, equitable community rules. It's important to understand this one rule around parking requirements that we're talking about today. Is one part of a holistic set of rules. That are both addressing concerns of equitable communities and as well as concern. Addressing concerns of climate friendly communities. In turn, again, coming back to this, this one, this, the piece that we're here to discuss today. In terms of our communications plan for rolling out these, these rules. Are there any other additional comments or questions? Any wordsmithing that you'd like to see in terms of especially those, the, the key points in the communications plan? Or in the strategy, as it were. And we also have the opportunity to come back to this later at our next meeting. If anyone would like to noodle on it a little more and provide any other, any specific edits to. The wording in the community involvement strategy. Or we can also entertain a motion to adopt as well if you don't, if no one has any specific edits. Or plan on, on making any additional edits in the next coming days.
I don't plan on making any other suggestions.
Chair, are you asking for a motion?
Can't take a motion.
Okay. Well, then I would like to move that we adopt the, the draft and the communication plan. As presented today.
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We can now call for a vote. Sandy, would you mind taking a role?
Sure, Chair Salazar.
I.
Vice Chair Bergen.
Hi.
Commissioner Buck.
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Hi.
Commissioner Stowe.
Hi.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much to all staff, but especially Sophie and Sandy for your work on this. Yeah, I think this is a good plan for, for what we need to do and how we need to move this forward. So thanks so much. And thank you also for your continued work on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Salazar and the rest of the commission.
Excellent, thank you. All right. And next we'll move to our next agenda item, which is. Another draft community involvement strategy, this time for the stormwater requirements. And Haley, it's all yours now.
Thank you, Commissioner Salazar. So, good evening commissioners. My name is Haley Campbell. I'm the project manager for the MS4 post-construction runoff amendment project. I'm just going to provide a little bit of background on the project because it is so technical, so bear with me for a few minutes. In accordance with the 1972 Federal Clean Water Act, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency established regulations specific to stormwater discharges. Which apply to entities that own and operate municipal separate storm sewer systems, or MS4s for short. The program is administered in two phases. Phase one regulates populations of 100,000 or greater. And phase two serves populations between 50,000 and 100,000. Springfield falls within phase two. The permit requires the city create and enforce a stormwater management program designed to reduce pollutants from the MS4 to protect water quality. And satisfy the Clean Water Act. The permit also requires the development of an MS4 plan that addresses construction site runoff control. Or the municipal code and post-construction site runoff for new development and redevelopment, which is managed by the Springfield Development Code. And our engineering design standards and procedures manual. In order to address these requirements, the city must strengthen the development code to reduce low income. Develop, low impact development, which refers to porous pavement, green roofs, filtration and infiltration. Swales and rain gardens and update the code standards for onsite stormwater controls to retain at least the first one inch of rainfall onsite to meet city standards. Since these changes are driven by the state, no policy changes will occur with this code and EDSPM amendments. The changes are technical in nature, so coordination and notice will be focused on development professionals who design and create. These stormwater structures, homeowners with an interest in green infrastructure. And environmental organizations who wish to benefit the community. As far as the community, community involvement strategy, it'll consist of posting notice in the newspaper and on the city's website. Which, as Sophie mentioned, is being updated to include CFEC and also future code update projects. A project page on the Springfield Oregon Speaks will ensure that interested parties receive the pertinent information. And it will also include project updates, the schedule, any frequently asked questions as needed. A staff advisory team will also support the project core team. By identifying and resolving any technical issues and concerns and provide feedback on the draft work products. Outreach will occur again on Springfield Oregon Speaks, over social media, at workshops with the public and at public hearings. Two public hearings will be held, one with the Planning Commission and a joint meeting with the City of Springfield City Council and Lane County Board of Commissioners. So that's a little bit of background on the project. The questions that I'll have for you tonight are just to provide three. Three answers, two potentially. Are the proposed involvement strategies sufficient? What additional key messages should be included? And are there additional opportunities to involve the community given the, given the limited resources available? I'd like to now share my screen with a draft of the community involvement strategy. Again, we received feedback from the community communications team, as did Sophie's project. And so there are some markups in the existing documents from sections that were needed additional clarification. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. And are you seeing the community involvement strategy?
Yes.
Okay. So the sections that were updated for the communications team.
We're seeing your script, not the strategy.
Ah, thank you, Sandy. One second. Okay, can everyone see it now?
Yes.
Thank you. So some changes that were suggested, we're changing the. Or providing clarification that it's not a sewer system, it is a stormwater system. Because in the city of Springfield, we are very clear that stormwater and sewer are separate and not to be combined. Because we want to keep them separate and reduce our pollution discharge issues. It's a key message in our involvement strategy, but also coming from the permit itself. Other things that were updated were within the outreach goals. So just moving that we are complying with the citizen involvement program was added to the end. Of the outreach goals section. Some key messages that the permit was part of the National Pollution Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Or MPDS and the Federal Clean Water Act and is to comply with DEQ requirements. The last couple of things, the chart was updated to include separating the key messages and workshops. And to assign staff personnel who are responsible for the project similar to Sophie's table. And as far as the timeline goes, that was also updated to reflect and. Reflect some of the drafts that will need to be provided to the communications team, to the project core team and to the technical advisory team. And we want to provide and receive as much feedback as we can. So that stretched the timeline a little bit from potentially going to the Planning Commission in June. To looking at this summer or the end of the summer for that Planning Commission meeting. We are also giving time for some workshops with the public. So that stretched the, the notice. To DLCD before we can hold that planning hearing. So I will open it up now for feedback from the commissioners. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy. So I will open it up now for feedback from the commissioners. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to hear. Thank you.
All right, any questions or feedback? Haley, what are the environmental groups that you are, that are on your radar for outreach currently?
Great question, Commissioner Salazar. At this point in time, it will probably mostly be sub that we will be working, reaching out to. They do have a drinking water protection program and we work with them quite a bit for our drinking water and time of travel zones. And they manage several of our, well, they oversee some of our projects. So that's one that we'd be working with. But beyond toxics is another great or environmental organization that frequently deals with. Local contaminants and, and concerns of that nature. So I'm wel, welcome any other feedback from the commissioners if they can think of some great examples.
I wonder if Mackenzie River Trust, if this is a project that they might be interested in. I think even other major developers in the, who operate in the city or could operate in the city, I think. Specifically the major affordable housing developers in our community, this would be pertinent to them. Cornerstone Community Housing, Homes for Good, Saint Vincent de Paul, Hap to Hap for Humanity, I think would all be interested in. Getting regular updates around this.
Thank you, Commissioner Salazar. I'll be sure to include them on the list of people to reach out to.
All right, seeing Noah and other thoughts or, or questions or feedback. We're also able to, similarly, similar to our previous discussion. Can table this to, if you want to noodle on it and think of any additional edits you may have or other. Organizations you think would be helpful to reach out to or other feedback, we could provide that. Over the coming days and come back to vote on a motion at a later meeting or we can entertain a motion currently. Also happy to take other questions. Commissioner Stowe?
I think this is a great, you're doing great work. I love this. I love stormwater retention and. My, my only encouragement is to keep making it fun because I always love seeing the, the little, you know, storm water banishments. You know, parks, things at the park or whatever else. My kids are always jumping in there in the summertime, but I just keep making it fun and it's doing really good. With that, I would move to adopt the changes.
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, and I, I also want to clarify, Commissioner Stowe, that this is to approve the community involvement strategy as presented. Not as published. I forgot to make that clarification in our last, last motion.
Amen friendly, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Sandy, would you mind taking a role?
Sure. Commissioner, um, sorry, Chair Salazar?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Bergen?
Hi.
Commissioner Buck?
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Hi.
Commissioner Rhodes Stein?
Hi.
And Commissioner Stowe.
Hey.
Excellent. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again Haley for that presentation and for your work on this. Again, I'd just like to, to echo what I said for the last agenda item as well that I really like that we're moving in the direction of using. Utilizing Springfield Oregon speaks to get more community feedback and to encourage more citizen involvement. So. Yeah, thanks for everyone's work and, and moving that along. So excellent. All right, and our next item are any reports from city council meetings. So I have the list here.
I'm, I'm supposed to have one, but I see that I've left that report at home. So I'll have to do it next time if that's all right.
That's okay, we can table it for next time.
It was April third.
April third, okay, excellent. All right. So we'll, we'll look forward to hearing that report next time. Any, then it looks like there was a, an April tenth meeting. All right, we can table that for, for next time as well. So we'll have to remember to listen out for, to, to go back to April third and tenth. For that meeting and there was a meeting yesterday, but typically we don't take. We allow that grace period for meetings if they're the day before as well. All right. So with no reports from city council meetings. Any other business from the planning commission? All right, seeing none. Any business from the development and public works department?
So I'll give you a meeting update. So we will meet May second. So. There will be a work session on another of our long range planning projects, the Nacho Resources. Work that's being done on the U G B expansion areas. So that's the North Gateway. And then down toward the Mill Race and a couple of Willamette Land properties. The, for the Goshen landfill, the Metro Plan Amendment to allow the sanitary sewer line extension to those. Lane County actually delayed their deliberations. So I'm guessing we won't be deliberating on that. At your May second meeting, but haven't decided that for sure. And so I, I'm guessing you're going to have a little more time to be thinking about that one. There is more information that's being added, that was added to the record. So when we get that information from Lane County, we'll get that to you along with an updated staff report. So that is coming, just probably not as soon as we had thought. And that's all I have at this point.
All right, thank you Sandy. And once again, welcome to our two new planning commissioners. Welcome aboard. And with that, we adjourn the planning commission regular meeting. Thank you, everyone.